Good evening. Get to order the Township of Howell Planning Board, April 19th meeting. Opening statement.
I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tri-Town News. Second, on January 19th, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the Township of Howell. Third, on January 19th, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the Planning Board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Former Mayor Gatto has been excused. Mr. Husser.
Here.
Chief Kudrick.
Here.
Mr. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Boyle sent me an email. I thought he was coming, but maybe he meant to say he wasn't, so we're going to say he's excused. Mr. Seaman.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Nacastro's been excused, Mayor Berger's been excused, and Chairman Nash has been excused. Vice Chairman Tannenhouse?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Hey, can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving abroad. Chief?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Thank you. Okay. Eileen, do we have any approval of minutes?
We have no minutes.
Any vouchers?
We have no vouchers.
Any correspondents?
Yes, I sent today, which I figured probably was a little late. There's two ordinances coming out, ordinance 18-5 and 18-6. They're both special assessment bond ordinances. One is for Route 9, one is for Freewood Acres, and it has to do with the sewer service.
Correct.
And the board members need to review them so we can determine at the next meeting if they are substantially consistent with the utility element of the master plan.
Okay.
And then the council will, they've already introduced, and they will have a public hearing and adoption at their meeting in May 15, so we need to decide on May 10.
Okay.
All right. I also had an email from Allison Ciriani. She is the deputy clerk. She asked me to please remind all the members to look for an email from her regarding your financial disclosure statement. They are due by April 30th, so you're kind of have only a few days left to fill them out.
So let me just amplify that a little bit. In the last few years, the state has become quite aggressive with municipalities and or public officials that have not filed them on time. There are fines associated with being late, so it's a serious, it's a serious deal.
And we have had a few members applying the last couple of years.
Okay.
If you have any problems, you can either contact Allison, or you can call me directly, and I will transfer you over to Allison, and she can help you out.
When is it due?
April 30th.
Yeah.
And the email will not be from me, it will be from Allison Ciriani, C-I-R-A-N-N-I. She's the deputy clerk.
And she's going to send it out?
She already sent it, so look for it. She sent it a couple of weeks ago.
And for the last few years, it's been electronic. You used to hand, fill it out by hand, and the town would send it in en masse, but you electronically file now. There's not too many questions, you know, associated with, it's pretty easy form to fill out.
Is it on record? I know it's electronic. I mean, we get the kickback via email, but is it on record with the town that we're good to go?
Well, it gets filed with the state.
Okay.
And I don't think you get like a confirmation that you're good, but yeah, there may be a receipt associated with it, like you mailed it in. I'm not sure, though.
Okay.
She may get notice as the clerk, because she does sometimes tell me, this one hasn't done it yet, or this one.
Yeah, it seems like you just hit a button that says you're okay.
Could you, could you send, have her send me an email again, please?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's the only correspondence I have.
All right. Counselor, is it recommended that we listen to our professionals about the two proposed ordinances on the sewers, so that we can, we can?
I don't know that we're even prepared for that.
Okay.
You know, we didn't work on it, the council did, and we just got it.
Okay.
So the answer is yes, but at the next meeting.
Got it.
But I did send an email with copies of them today to everybody.
Yeah, I saw the email, just didn't know if there was anything that our professionals could offer while we were reviewing it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, resolutions. First one is case number SD-2978. Eligible voters are Mr. Huzzar, Kudrick, Russo, Schneider, myself, and Mr. Seaman.
Make a motion to memorialize. Case number SD-2978.
Do I have a second?
One second.
Okay, roll.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is case number SD-2983. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize. Case number SD-2983.
Second.
Ready?
Yep.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay. Next resolution for proposed ordinance 0-18-2. Eligible voters are Mr. Huzzar, sorry, Husser. Sorry for pronunciation. Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, and Mr. Seaman.
Make a motion to memorialize. Resolution for ordinance 0-18-2.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Okay, next resolution is for proposed ordinance 018-3. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman.
Make a motion to memorialize. Resolution proposed ordinance 0-18-3.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized.
Mr. Chair, we're still working on the Wilhelm Resolution, so that'll be on the next meeting.
Okay. All right, next resolution is case number SP-805A2-F. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Mr. Russo, Mr. Schneider, Mr. Seaman. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to memorialize. Case number SP-805A2-F.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. We have no submission waivers today.
No submission waivers.
First application before the board is case number SP-1043CR, Freehold Regional High School District, Howell High School.
Mr. Chair, just before the applicant gets up, and I've probably done this several times, but I'm not sure everyone's heard it yet, and we have some board members. This application is different than most applications that we hear. When a government entity spends money on a capital improvement, they're required to come to the local planning board to present the proposed improvements, but we don't approve or deny the application. We listen, and if we have recommendations we'd like to make, we do that. If not, we can say we have no recommendations, but it's not an application that's to be approved or denied by the, the planning board.
Ron, is it the same procedure as the field upgrade with the turf?
Yes.
Okay. We want to have the remote mic. Eileen?
If you want to talk, use the board, if you want to use the handheld mic, it might be easier. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Weiss, Principal Architect with Freitag Vice Hopkins Dooley in Trenton, New Jersey.
Can you just spell your last name for us?
Sure, that's V as in Victor, E.I., S as in Sam, Z as in zebra.
And just briefly, give us your education and qualifications.
I hold a Bachelor's of Science and Bachelor's of Architecture from Kent State University in Ohio, and I am New Jersey and Pennsylvania Registered Architect.
We have to approve his credentials?
Yes.
We'll approve your credentials.
Thank you. I'm here representing the Board of Education, and I appreciate the explanation by your legal counsel. As indicated, Department of Education requires this submission. This is the first step in applying for a schematic application to the Department of Education. It's required by all public school districts. And essentially, our obligation on behalf of the board is to show that what's being proposed is consistent with the master plan within the township. It is a first step towards a public referendum that's currently being planned to be conducted on October 2nd. And again, this is just a schematic submission, just to show the extent of work. We did receive a letter from CME Associates, Ms. Laura Newman. There were a few questions, I'm happy to provide some responses if you'd like me to go through the items.
Laura, let me just swear again. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Mr. Weiss, I should have sworn you in also. Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're about to give this board, or that you did give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yeah, it is.
Okay. Go ahead, Laura.
So with the, my primary focus, they're redoing the tennis courts, there's a portion of the roof that's going to be replaced, and then they're redoing portions of their parking lot. So understanding that, my one question was, do you anticipate any grading changes with these improvements?
The proposed work is to deal with degrading play surfaces of the tennis courts, and only to the extent that minor grading would be required to provide positive flow over the surface of the court, and to make sure that there's no collection of stormwater immediately adjacent. There's really nothing substantive proposed or anticipated this time.
And the parking lot seems to adjoin some curbing and sidewalk. Do you anticipate replacing that?
No, at this juncture, there's no curb anticipated unless there happened to be an existing piece missing or damaged, but the intent is to really deal with degraded paving. The board had initially anticipated trying to address more of the paving, but as you can imagine, with six different high school properties in the county, it's a huge undertaking. So the paving had to be prioritized, so only one section is being addressed at this time.
And do you anticipate milling and overlaying that surface, or is there any base repair? That kind of goes to my next point, which is the specification for the pavement.
Sure. Yeah, the approach is based on, we have a consulting engineer, Van Cleef Engineering, that was brought onto the team that is working in conjunction with our firm, and do, through initial analysis of the type of degradation that was in the paving, they felt that the base, paving base for all intent purposes would be reusable, suitable, so the intent is to do a two inch milling, and then provide, replace any distressed areas, repair cracks, and then provide a two inch asphalt overlay course, and striping would essentially be to match the existing current configuration.
Okay, so Mr. Chairman, with that, I have nothing additional, just so the board understands there's no increase in any impervious surface as it relates to this. It's really just an upgrade to existing improvements or rehabilitation of existing improvements, so I have nothing further at this time.
And you don't feel that it's necessary to get any testimony from the civil engineer, Mr. Van Cleef?
I do not.
Great, thank you. Does the board have any questions? Or just making a recommendation, right?
They're requesting that you find that it's substantially consistent with the master plan, but in addition to that, you know, any, any recommendations that?
Do we have to open it to the public for any public?
It's not a public hearing, but you can open it up to the public if you wish.
Okay, sure. Well, if nobody has any questions, we'll open it up to the public for any questions. Does anybody have any? See, if no one has any questions, we'll close the public portion of the hearing. It's the pleasure of the board.
I make a motion that case number SP-1043CR is consistent with our master plan.
I second that.
Roll call, Eileen?
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is case number SP-960R, United Advertising Corporation.
Evening, Mr. Chairman. Would you prefer I sit or stand?
Whatever you feel most comfortable with.
I'll stand if you don't mind.
If you stand, just speak into the mic on the podium there, or please use the handheld mic.
If you have any exhibits, you can use that handheld, okay?
They want to give that to Stu.
Perfect, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals. My name is Dennis Collins of the firm of Collins, Vella, and Casello. I have the responsibility this evening of representing United Advertising Corporation. I were here tonight to seek preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a billboard on property notice 1035 Route 9 North, on your tax map, as block 144, lot 23. This application has had somewhat of a long and tortured history, but we're here today to apply for site plan approval under a previously adopted and effective ordinance regarding billboards in the Township of Howell. With me this evening is Mr. Stuart Chaloner. He is our engineer and planner. He prepared the plans some seven years ago, and has updated them for the purposes of tonight's hearing. Also with me is Mr. Giordano, Mark Giordano, who is the owner of the United Advertising Corporation. He's here to answer any questions that the board may have further on in the proceeding. We're hoping tonight to present to you what is a variance-free and waiver-free application. That is our intent, that has been our intent from the beginning, and hopefully, at the end of that, appreciating the board, we'll see fit to grant our approval.
Mr. Collins, just before you continue, I just want to do a couple of housekeeping items. Eileen has pre-marked some exhibits, but there are a few additional exhibits that I would like to add. So we have B exhibits, which are the board exhibits, 1 through 7. I would like to add as B8, the zoning board resolution in case BA-17-01, which was... which was memorialized on November 13th, 2017. And that'll be B8.
Thank you, and I have additional copies of that resolution if the board needs to...
Okay. And then also, as B9, we're just going to mark the appellate division decision in this matter. And just had it in front of me, where'd it go? Ah, there we go. And then, as an A exhibit, A4, I want to mark the letter dated March 16th, 2018, from Todd Cohen to yourself.
Thank you, and I have additional copies of that, because that was going to be one of my exhibits. Could I add just a couple more before we start? Mr. Good Charity wants us to mark it as we go along.
Go ahead.
We'll mark now as A5. Do you have stickers, or do we just want to mark it on the board?
Have you seen our budget?
At A5, we'll, we'll mark an aerial of the site? Yes. We also have two hand-add exhibits, one which will be A6, which is the A Distance Exhibit to the nearest billboards.
Does the aerial or the distance exhibit have a date, or no?
Yeah, it's dated today.
Okay.
Both of them, or just the A6?
A6. A5 is dated March 19th, 2013.
3/19/13, thank you.
Yes. Wow, so that, that's unusual, huh? That's...
What's that?
It's 4/19.
And moving on from there, our last exhibit will be A7.
Okay.
A7 is, I think it's a term of art that Ms. Newman used, I was calling it the pigeon tray exhibit, but it is a exhibit that shows something that was requested by the engineer to prevent anything from falling from the billboard, a pigeon tray, so to speak. Is that right?
Pigeon what?
Pigeon what? Man, yeah?
You get the short chair.
Mr. Chairman, is my understanding that the notice to adjoining property orders and affidavit of publication have been reviewed? I believe I, a blind squirrel finds a nut, and I did it right the first time, so I believe the judge has jurisdiction subject to your attorney's confirmation of that?
I haven't reviewed the, the list. Eileen normally does that. Eileen finds it acceptable.
And I would just ask that Mr. Chaloner be sworn?
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do, yes.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
My name is Stuart Chaloner, C-H-A-L-L-O-N-E-R. My address is 201 Main Street, Tomsover, New Jersey.
Mr. Chaloner, could you give the board the benefit of your educational background, your work experience, and any licenses that you hold in the state of New Jersey?
I have a Bachelor's of Science in Civil Engineering. I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey as a professional planner and professional engineer. I've been practicing engineering and owned my own firm since 1995.
Have you been accepted by this board as an engineer and planner, both in this application and other applications, including some pending ones that I guess might adjourn for tonight?
Yes, that's correct. Okay, we'll accept your credentials. Thank you.
Mr. Chaloner, are you either prepared or supervise the preparation of the plans upon which we seek approval, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Could you just give the board a general description of the site? The site as it sits today?
This is a commercial site, approximately 1,000 feet south of the intersection of Casino and Route 9. It's located on the northbound side of Route 9. The applicant is proposing a monopole billboard, V shape, that will be offset center. The pole itself would be mounted in the parking, parking lot on the side of the building, and the billboard will extend over the existing one-story structure.
Could you describe the surrounding uses generally along with the Route 9 corridor in that area?
The Route 9 corridor in this area is a mixed use of commercial, there is some residential and commercial. Our facility is commercial, there is a residential use just to the south of our property, and commercial to the north. It's approximately across the street from the self-storage facility. I believe there's a bank across the street, but it's a mixed use.
And could you describe to the board our specific proposal regarding the sign?
Our, our proposal is to construct, again, a monopole sign. It will be approximately 45 feet in height. We have designed it to meet the ordinance requirements that was in place when this application was originally submitted, when billboards were permitted in Howell Township. It is, again, it's going to be a single pole with an offset mount, so the billboard will meet the setback requirements. In Howell Township, the ordinance required setbacks 20 feet from the front and sideyards. The applicant's approximately 25 feet from the, from the right-of-way of Route 9, and just over 20 and a half feet from the sideyards.
Can you describe the, the lighting of the signs?
On page four of, of, page four, four of your set, there is a lighting detail, it will be light fixtures that are mounted to the sign. It's not a LED sign, it's not a backlit sign. The light fixtures will shine upwards on the sign to ensure that it doesn't interfere with motorists, and it has been designed completely in compliance with the DOT requirements.
Now, this design was also taken from billboards that were previously approved by Howell Township for United Advertising?
That's correct.
And other locations on Route 9? Highway 34.
And Highway 34. This applicant received approvals for this, the same style and billboard.
Does the sign itself, or the construction near the base increase to any extent the impervious coverage on the site requiring changes to grading or stormwater treatment?
No, the, the sign is, it'll be an augured hole in an existing paved parking lot, and that sign base will be constructed within that, so there will be no increase in pervious coverage.
These signs are designed for storm, storm events, is that correct?
Yes.
Could you describe to the board?
They have to, obviously, they'd have to meet the storm requirements, and as, since Hurricane Sandy, those storm requirements have even increased since the time this application was originally submitted. They would have to meet the current codes. I believe in this, in this area, probably be 120 mile an hour wind requirements.
Now, to your, as part of your design, you've designed these before in other locations, including Howell. Could you describe to the board what other outside agencies may have an interest in this, and whether we comply with their regulations?
The application requires, before we come to Howell Township, we receive our approvals from the DOT. Since it's on a state highway, we're obligated to meet the state highway requirements, and the applicant has his DOT permits.
And just to clarify the record, Mr. Chairman, today, Eileen sent me over a letter from the DOT, because they got my notice, and they said we have, prior to construction, we have to get our permitting for the billboard. We've had that since 2011, when we first appeared. I guess it's been a while since they've heard from us, so we'll present that, if you do grant an approval, we'll put that, provide that to the board. But we have our DOT permits since before we...
Does that expire at all, or?
No, no, there's no reason why, I guess, there's no reason why they missed it, we're going to provide them the permit number, et cetera. Okay? Yeah, these permits are, one of the commodities in this business is to establish your permits. We wouldn't have applied back in 2011 without that permit. There was also, though, there's an important DOT regulation with respect to distance between billboards, is that right?
There is. Howell Township actually has a more restrictive distance requirements. The ordinance stipulated at the time that you weren't allowed to have a billboard within 1,000 feet on the same side of the road. We prepared an exhibit which has been marked as A6. There are two, the two closest billboards, there's a V-shaped billboard.
Oh, yeah, of course. We have copies for the board members that they, they want to see.
They got the colored copy.
Our exhibit is colored, the, yours is black and white for the same budget reasons, I guess, that we're on that.
In the exhibit that's entitled Billboard Setback Exhibit, stated today, March 19, 2018, it identifies the proposed V-shaped billboard in the center of the image. This is a Google image, recent Google image, and you'll see that there is a V-shaped billboard approximately 1,700 feet south of our project and a single one-sided billboard facing the nor, actually, you can only see it from the southbound lane, but it's on the northbound side of Route 9, and that's approximately 1,400 feet north of our property. So, we meet the requirements of the 100-foot, or 1,000-foot setback.
So, and this application is governed by an ordinance that was previously adopted by Howell that made billboards a conditional use, is that correct?
That is correct.
And Ms. Newman put in Section 3 of her report, all those requirements for the conditional use that needed to be met by any applicant in order, really, to even be before the planning board as a permitted use in the zone, is that right?
That is also correct, yes.
And you have reviewed those ordinance requirements as part of your preparation?
Yes, I did.
On this application?
Yes, I did.
Based upon your plans, your investigation, and your review of all the professional reports, do you have an opinion as to whether or not we are fully compliant with the requirements of the conditional use?
We're fully compliant with the conditional use for billboards ordered in Section 188-98.2, which was a place at the time at the application.
As part of the application, we appeared at a technical review committee meeting with the professionals of the board, at least some of us appeared.
I did, yeah.
And they had a list of various comments in their report, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you are prepared to address any of those comments, but we will meet all the requests of the board professionals, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Part of that was, though, and you prepared an exhibit marked A7, if you can give some copies to Eileen?
Yep.
Mr. Chaloner, could you describe to the board, first, do we have any of these type of structures on our other billboards? Are you aware? In Howell?
I don't think so, no. We have, they're like gangplanks where they have access, but not to the specific that it's the bird catcher.
So, Ms. Newman asked us to add that to our design, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, describe to the board what we did and what the purposes are.
We sent it out to the manufacturer of the billboards, and they submitted a construction detail. This exhibit is entitled, or prepared by RMG Outdoor Inc., and they provide the trays to catch any bird droppings over the parking lot area. I believe that was concerned, right?
Is that like resolution compliance that council takes care of?
Well, no, Ms. Newman asked for it in her report.
I meant cleaning it out.
Pardon me?
I meant cleaning it out.
Oh.
I don't know. I think that's an ongoing, it's ongoing maintenance for the entire structure itself. I mean, there are...
Because if there were, I'd put it in the resolution, that's why I ask.
Okay.
So, that's Dennis's job, you know, just let me know.
He was dying to do that to me. And not as an aside, you know, there's a long and tortured history, and after six years, six years of hanging out with Mr. Gutcher, what he told me to do and advised the board to do was exactly what the appellate division said for us to do, and that's why we're back here. He makes me clean out the pigeon tray, I guess that's fair.
Well, is there, I mean, is there any documentation we need to add in the resolution or put on the deed that requires them to maintain it on a certain interval per some department?
I would say that, I don't know that it needs to be that distinct, you know, that we're going to codify how it's going to be maintained, but it'll be a condition in the resolution that it'll be regularly maintained. Laura, do you need to see, like, maybe a maintenance, a brief maintenance plan for it or something?
Yeah, they could provide a schedule.
Yeah, so we'll do it that way.
Okay.
That's fine, and just to be clear, we did not get a chance, I did not get a chance to speak to Mrs. Newman. We had submitted this, we had to step on the manufacturer to get something like this design, so if there's any modifications to that that are required by your engineer post-action of the board, we certainly will comply with that.
And aside, just so the board understands, aside from just bird debris, the point is it also provides netting for ice. It provides control for things to fall through from the billboard. So, originally, how this came up was in another municipality, particularly when you have a billboard that's overhanging parking or a building to have things that would be dropping. So, this prevents that from occurring.
Yeah, I think it's sort of says really, although we called it, it's really not for pigeon droppings. They're not dangerous, it's ice or anything falling off, that's what it's really for. Is that right?
Yeah.
Fair, okay. But she called it a pigeon tray, so... Mr. Chaloner, though, as part of this application, you did request certain checklist items because of the nature of the application being a billboard on an already improved site, is that right?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, one of the submission waivers, not a design waiver, was that we get a free whole soils conservation district application? That's not applicable to this, is that correct?
No, we would be, excuse me, we would be disturbing less than 5,000 square feet of land area, so we would not be required.
And one of the checklist items is a letter from the utility saying they'll serve this. There's already electricity on the site, and that's the total amount of our utilities, correct?
That's correct.
You asked for a waiver to submit EIS, a landscape plan, lighting pan, and calculation of parking requirements. Is that due to the nominal nature of the disturbance?
Correct. The billboard will not take up any parking spaces. It doesn't, it's going to be constructed completely within the paved parking area. There's no impact to any surrounding environmental issues. The landscaping, again, since it's in a parking area, we're not proposing any landscaping. And the lighting is, the lighting of the billboard itself is just the lighting that's on the billboard. There won't be any ground lighting.
And finally, well, finally, there's a, you'll provide a signature block as needed on the plan in the event we get an approval?
That's correct, yes.
And you've already testified to the uses surrounding, which is another checklist item, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
In our previous applications that the board approved, the board asked us to make certain that our utility box was on the side of the monopole interior to the lot rather than visible from the exterior. Is that something you've taken in your design, and if it's not reflective in a note, that that is our standard operating procedure, but could be reflected in the condition of an approval?
Yes, that's correct.
And just to, not to repeat, but I'm getting paid by the hour, so following all your testimony today, you still take the position that we are of no variance, no waiver application from a design perspective?
That's correct. This application is complying to the billboard.
And there are previous, there are variances that are pre-existing on the site, but from a site plan perspective, that we are in no way modifying, altering, exacerbating, or really are even truly part of the billboard application.
That's correct, yes.
And I just wanted to know for the record, because it was marked as A4, as part of this history, there is a letter that we were authorized to file as part of the evidence here. We discovered through your new Cracker Jack zoning officer that there was an issue with respect to a residential approval in 2007 that allowed the owner of this property to have a family member reside on the property. The letter that's marked A4 is, as part of our agreement, obviously, he couldn't do that because there was a setback requirement. He has abandoned that approval. I think the people that live there are dead, or could have lived there or dead, but I want to make certain that for the record, A4 was an authorized document for the township of Howell that any previous approval on this property was abandoned. That property owner is before the zoning board, I think, right now for a site plan application. Mr. Chairman, that's actually all I have. We would be happy to respond to any concerns of your professionals or any questions of the board.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Collins.
Mr. Chair, I just want to provide a brief history. We have members up here that have no background on the last several years. So, probably six or seven years ago, many municipalities along the Route 9 corridor had actions, civil rights or actions, I suppose, filed against them, that they were unnecessarily burdening free speech by overly restrictive or complete bans on billboards. This was one of the municipalities. Howell, I'm sorry, Manalapan was another municipality. Marlborough was an additional municipality. I don't know if there are others, but those were the three big ones. In an effort to resolve the matter, the Township Council at that time adopted an ordinance which permitted billboards, and it was subject to the prevailing case law at that time. And that was the ordinance that this applicant proceeded under. Subsequent to that, there was new case law that came out that has stated you can have a much more restrictive or even a complete ban on billboards under certain circumstances. So, Howell subsequently revoked the ordinance. However, under the municipal land use law, you lock in when you file the application, although the Supreme Court is determining exactly what that means as we speak. So, this applicant locked in under the old ordinance, even though the ordinance had been rescinded. The ordinance, as you heard, was a conditional use. There were several conditions that were associated with it. One condition was that you couldn't be within a certain amount of feet of a residential use. It didn't have to be a residential zone necessarily, but any use was good enough to require a D-variance, which this board could not grant. During the hearing process, the neighboring property owner, Mr. Lubinski, came to multiple hearings and said he had a residential use on his property, which was close enough that one of the conditions would not have been satisfied, which would have divested this board of jurisdiction and required a D3 variance. So, there was a lot of back and forth at the hearings. The zoning officer at that time, or the acting zoning officer, Mr. Nunziano, determined that it was a lawful use on the adjacent property. The applicant contested that and contested Mr. Lubinski's assertions. The board denied the application essentially without prejudice because it lacks the jurisdiction to overrule the zoning officer. There's a process for that at the zoning board. And we said that's where somebody should go, anybody should go. Mr. Lubinski wants to go there to get a certification of nonconformity. If the applicant wanted to go there, somebody could go there. Nobody went there. So, there was a denial, essentially, again, without prejudice. The matter was appealed to the Law Division. The Law Division found that the board had acted in an arbitrary, unreasonable, capricious manner, and it should have rejected Mr. Nunziano's testimony. We appealed to the appellate division. The appellate division agreed, reversed the trial court, and essentially remanded it down to the zoning board, and there was a sort of a menu of different ways that the applicant could approach, you know, obtaining a finding that Mr. Lubinski's residential use was not lawful. They eventually had such a hearing. My understanding is Mr. Lubinski did not show up, although it was noticed, and they treated it as a Section 78 appeal of Mr. Nunziano's decision and found that Mr. Nunziano was incorrect. So, that brought them back here with a finding from the zoning board that Mr. Lubinski's property did not contain an actual legitimate residential use. The one thing that nobody knew the first time around, which came up and was referenced by Mr. Collins, was that there actually was an approval for residential use on the subject property when we heard the application here the first time around. That would have actually required a D3 variance as well, but they, since they've agreed to abandon that approval, it doesn't appear to be an issue anymore. But that's how this case wound up here again, after, you know, sort of a lot of different steps in the process.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, is that there was never a disagreement that if Mr. Lubinski's residential use was not legal, that that would have knocked us out. Mr. Gutcher was correct. The appellate division held that he was correct, that someone else had to make that determination. And the board, the zoning board, which is an exhibit B8, was a determination that Mr. Lubinski's use was not permitted. It was not a pre-existing nonconformity, so that's why we're here, hopefully establishing a fully conforming application.
Great, thank you. Ms. Newman, there is a couple of design waivers that appear to be existing conditions. Do you want to provide any testimony to those?
Well, what I would note is those are conditions as it relates to the site. They're not affiliated with the billboard. They deal with the front yard setback to the commercial building on the site, the side yard setback to the building on the site, no sidewalk being provided along the Route 9 frontage, and then the standard as it relates to projections or recesses, and again, that applies to the commercial building on site.
Is this enough of a construction project to warrant the sidewalks? I know that the application just south of this project, that the Reliable Solar, I believe, we had, we had them install sidewalks in their application about a year or so ago.
Was that a billboard application, or that was like a...
No, they were adding that building in the back of the building. So, it'd be nice to connect that side.
I mean, to answer your question, it is a site plan application. I don't believe the applicant controls the entire frontage.
I think there's actually a couple of things. When we made the other decision, it was also based upon the notion that we're trying to encourage pedestrian walking along the Route 9 corridor rather than taking your car and taking it out onto Route 9 and going a couple of feet to the next lot. My understanding, though, as was referenced earlier, is the actual use on this site is also the subject of an application before the zoning board right now, and I think the zoning board could probably make that determination in the context of what they are proposing for the use on the site.
Yes, and that application is to increase the intensity of the use of the site, and I would ask that the board defer to the zoning board as to the appropriateness of the sidewalks.
Do you want to say something? I mean, is it already, the chief believes that it's already paved on the front of the site. Is that, in fact, the case?
Let me turn my back. Yeah, it's all, if you look at the aerial, it's all paved, chief. You're right, you're correct.
Okay. Does anybody else have any couple of questions?
Why is the length of the subgrade pole and footing to be determined?
Once, if the board grants an approval, the next thing they do is to hire a Geo...
Geotech reasons?
Geotech. They're going to do borings, and then they determine what the appropriate depth would be.
Is the pole right in the vehicle passage?
The pole's right up against the building. It doesn't, it doesn't restrict that passage less than where the gate is.
Right.
Because the property kind of widens in that area, so it's over 18 foot wide at the gate, and it'll be, I think it's over 20 foot wide where the pole is.
Do you guys put any type of protections in place for that?
Oh, you know, we were just considering, because we looked at it this afternoon, we're going to add a couple of bollards around the base of the pole to protect the cars.
Is it car protection or...
Protect the pole.
Yeah, the pole and the cars, yeah.
Is it car or semi-protection? Because that is a commercial facility. Do they get any large truck traffic?
The large drive... The large driveways on the opposite side, this side really is a secondary access to the, I don't know what, I haven't seen their site plan application. I don't know what the proposed uses are, but the current uses are, there's a gate on that side that is generally closed. The main access to the site is on the southern side. And that's where the parking lot is.
But it's conceivable that truck traffic could go past that pole.
It could, but again, the more restrictive areas further away at the gate.
But I think, as was testified to, they're going to provide bollards to protect the base of the pole.
I know, I just want the testimony to say for truck track, the pole.
The bollard, I have to tell you, these things are driven, I mean, I don't think, I think the pole itself could withstand a vehicle just based upon the depth that they have to go into, but they're protecting the pole from that.
Either way, whatever the testimony that the professional wants to provide on the...
Mr. Chairman, if the board were to impose a condition to provide bollards subject to the review of Ms. Newman and the proper, you know, design, we would be happy to do so.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Okay.
And Mr. Schneider is the only familiar face from the last application. I wanted to mention that, right?
Could you put on the record what you, the color of the pole is going to be?
Battleship gray.
It will be, my client advises it will be battleship gray.
Is there any way to get that? I mean, it looks, that side ladder is like 15 feet up from grade. Is there any way that get down, that down to grade?
The ladder?
Yeah, so could Joe Schmo walk up and get that ladder down?
No, no. The, the access is restrictive. That ladder doesn't, doesn't pull down.
Yeah, they're designed with concern, you know, kids see a pole and a sign and a catwalk, and they're designed not to, not to happen. For our own liability perspective.
Okay. Any other questions other than, I have a lighting one? You're a lighting expert, huh? All right. Mr. Challander. Believe, I think Paul and I are the only members here that are on the board from the original...
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The only ones here on the board that were around when the first round of billboards came through. During that testimony, I'm not sure if it was this application or not, but I had brought up some standards from the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials. Are you familiar with those standards?
I am. I thought the last time that we spoke it was more of the LED billboards, was it?
No, the, we had talked about the, their recommendations for luminances, and they have three different levels of suggested ambient or recommended ambient luminances. For the low end of the range, they're looking for that 10 to 20-foot candles. I'm in that range, and I noticed that your proposed is in the mid-20s. Does he want to reduce it to 20?
My client is unfamiliar, I don't want to say unfamiliar, with that, those standards. If they apply to billboards, Mr. Chairman, we of course comply.
Yeah, that is their, that is their sign lighting recommendations.
If you recall, just from a more simplistic perspective, I think there's three light poles there. When we started these processes all those years ago, you may recall, there were four, and there was a significant reduction. You know, so we pretty much took the exact design that we, well, we did take the exact design that we did on the other billboards.
There's also been some LED changes in technology these days since that application last came to as well.
We understand.
So that was sort of qualified language on that condition. So what, I just want to be very clear. What's the, where are you getting the standard from, Mr. Chairman?
On the, you can have a copy of this if you'd like. It's the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials.
Kind of like the traffic ASHTO, I guess, right?
Yeah, that's exactly, the acronym is ASHTO. And their recommendation, illuminances for sign lighting, the ambient lumens on the low end is 10 to 20-foot candles.
So this, the luminance here is going to be 10 to 20-foot candles.
Well, whatever those standards, whatever the standards are under that, just like ASHTO. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
Well, but whatever those standards are, I want to know them tonight so that they're in the resolution, and it's not an argument later on. Our chairman seems to say that it's between 10 and 20. Mr. Challander, you want, we could take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, the low end of it is between 10 and 20?
10 and 20.
So our, our average foot candles is 26?
Correct. You're in the medium range, and I don't think we need to be in the medium range in Howell.
Oh, is there a low end and a high end?
There's a low, a middle, and a high.
So we're in the medium.
You're in the medium.
We take a five...
You can take five minutes.
And, Mr. Chairman, if you have those regs, you might want to give them to Mr. Challander so he can take a look.
No problem. Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
But would it be okay, is there any other questions with the board? So in case I don't want to keep turning my back and walking to my client here.
You guys have any questions? You okay with the color, battleship gray? Okay. No other questions? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess.
Actually, my client is familiar with those. Those are standards related to roadway signs, not billboards, but we would certainly comply with the 20 candle, put candle standard on that, even though that they don't, that doesn't technically apply to billboards, it applies to traffic signage. But we will do so. One thing I would ask the board, if I have to amend the application, if the board were to grant an approval, our detail shows our billboard. If you know that there is, there is a state requirement that when you go by a billboard, you'll see small placards that are not part of the rectangle that say "out front," you're not advertising. We've received violations because our plan does not show that placard, but the placard's required by the state. So we would ask that our, the face of the sign be permitted to include our placard so we could be, stay compliant.
Is that on the existing...
It has to be. There's a state requirement of a certain size letter.
The thing is, will it increase the size of the sign, or is it just being, you know, something that already is?
It would technically, well, are we at the max on the sign square footage?
We're 14 by...
You're at 672, and I believe 675 is permitted. Let me look.
We're allowed to have three square feet? Yeah. Can we give them a three-square?
So we would just ask, we would not exceed the permitted sign, we would not create a variance, but we could, if we were permitted to, add that placard within the size, the sign dimensions, we would ask that, we amend that application for that purpose.
Okay. Okay. Nobody has any further questions? We'll open this up to the public. We'll open this application up to the public. If anybody has any questions, please come up, speak clearly and slowly into the mic.
Mr. Chairman, can I confirm the testimony you've asked and give this board the truth? The whole truth, talk about the truth? I do. My name is Matthew Howard. I don't know if I've met everybody.
I'm sorry.
My name is Matthew Howard. I don't know if I've met everybody. I'm the Crackerjack zoning board, zoning officer of the township, have been for about a year and a half. I had to look it up, but I think it's a compliment.
It is.
Oh, all right. So, out of Urban Dictionary, that. But as Mr. Collins has stated, there is a long history to this. There's a lot of history to the neighboring property, there's a lot of history on the property. I wanted to give the board some background as to how the residential use on the site was found. We actually got word from our fire bureau, who does inspections of the commercial properties every year, that there was an illegal rental on the back building of this property. We investigated and found it was being rented out as an apartment. We did some research. We found the use variance allowing residential use. There were certain conditions on it that it could only be used for the owner's family. We confirmed that it wasn't the family. Took about six months' worth of violations and back and forth. Eventually, the residential use was finally removed from the site, discontinued. That was the spring of 2017. As far as I'm aware, there have been no residential use on the site since then. That is what prompted the site plan application that is going to the zoning board. The intent of the owner, and I don't want to speak for them, is to, with the application, is to abandon the residential use because they're going to convert the whole building to commercial. With that restriction on it for family use only, they had no family, they couldn't rent out the property, it was wasted money, so they're going for full commercial. That application, so that application to the zoning board has been brought on by code enforcement actions. That board, that application has not been heard by the board yet. I believe it has been deemed complete and is scheduled for a hearing, but as of now, I don't think an application to a board warrants abandonment. So I feel any approval on this site may be premature until that approval is granted and we have some firm case of abandonment. Because as of right now, if that application gets rescinded tomorrow and approval is granted here tonight, we then have a nonconforming application. That's all I have.
Can I ask Mr. Clark some questions?
I'll let Mr. Cuchero.
No, he'll cross-examination first.
Hey, Mr. Clark, who authorized you?
Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard, I'm sorry. Who authorized you to be here tonight to testify?
I can appear before any board.
Did you speak to anybody in your department regarding the representations you were going to make to this board this evening?
Over the last six months to a year, yes.
Okay, did you speak to Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Is he aware that you were, who came up with the idea to suggest that we carry this, that the abandonment by the owner should not be accepted by this board?
I did while I was sitting in the chair.
Okay. So do you, did you get any other advice when a person owns property puts a formal letter into the township saying, "I'm abandoning the use," do you believe that, somehow believe that's not effective?
I believe when it's attached to an application that it should be pending that application's approval.
Mr. Cuchero, I would just represent to you that we have the zoning officer here...
Represent to the board.
Represent to the board. We have the zoning officer here for what reason, I don't know.
We went through this the last time, and I don't really get the overly restrictive argument about who can show up to a public hearing. So I think, you know, we can agree to disagree on...
But Mr. Cuchero, the mayor, his ultimate superior is a member but not here tonight. There's a councilman who also sits on this board, and he's here taking a legal position, I assume on behalf of the township of Howell, that somehow this abandonment by the owner is not effective. It is effective when...
Well, I think he's taking a position in his capacity as a zoning officer. We haven't, we can talk about the merits of the position, but, yeah, I don't think that the zoning officer or any enforcement official clears with elected officials how they're going to enforce, you know, or do their jobs. So I don't, I don't agree with that portion of it, but I assume you have a legal argument as to the substance of what he said.
I'll wait till Mr. Howard's done.
I have nothing further.
He was done, he's subject to your cross-examination.
All right, so if I can just get to the podium here. Mr. Chairman, this is, I'm not going to go back into the history, but I've been doing this a long time. And for a zoning officer to appear here in front of the planning board and contradict the owner of the property, who through their attorney has advised this board that his client has and has abandoned the residential use, it is in writing, signed by the attorney as a evidence before this board, and in fact, when you read the letter...
Mr. Collins, if I could just stop you for a second. Mr. Cuchero, if you could give me some legal advice. That's not what I heard. What I heard was, is our zoning officer was said that there's an application in front of our zoning board to put the process in to abandon that, and that legally it's not been gone through the process, and our zoning officer is just saying he would rather see the, the process completed and the use truly abandoned through the zoning.
There's two things that are going on. That's absolutely correct, what you said. There is an application, and that application, part of that application before the zoning board necessarily involves a declaration that they've abandoned the prior approval. However, it does, that process doesn't change the fact that they've now declared here in a quasi-judicial setting that they are going to abandon the use. So essentially, I think that the zoning board now can't do anything other than accept the fact that that has now been abandoned. That application predated them coming here. The, the professional review conference that Mr. Collins referenced, I brought that up, and I said that, you know, if they're not using it anymore, why don't we just say that it's abandoned, and it's not an issue that's going to hang out anymore? And we went back and forth a little bit with it, and that's what generated the letter, was our professionals' insistence that there be a formal statement here that it's abandoned. So I understand Mr. Howard's concern with it. I don't think it's frivolous, and as I said, I think he has a right to be here. But I think that, that new evidence that came in tonight achieves that. They can't, they can't change their mind now, in my view. I mean, Mr. Collins, you agree?
I absolutely agree, and if I could just tell...
He actually agrees.
I absolutely agree. And I can tell the practicality, and this is why I get a little bit distressed. The resolution was granted in 2007, and Mr. Sehun got an approval, although it says "family member," the approval was really for his elderly parents to occupy an apartment in the back of the property. His elderly parents died. So, okay, this is, to finish, is that he illegally brought in someone, it was not permitted. He brought somebody illegally in, just like Mr. Lubinski did, and I assume the same thing happened to Mr. Lubinski.
I don't want to get in, I don't want to get into what Mr. Lubinski did or not.
It's just abandoned. It's abandoned.
Let me just say two things to that. Number one is, variances aren't given to specific people. You don't give it to Person A and to Person B. Variances are given to property. So if somebody else came in and bought the property and wanted to put their parents in there, I would be hard-pressed to say that the town could say no to them under that prior.
It's with family, yes. I agree, Ron.
So it was important that we extinguish that right as part of this process, which is why I insisted that that use be abandoned, not as part of, not waiting into the future, because then I agree with Mr. Howard, I don't think an approval was proper tonight. I think that they would not have satisfied the conditional use standards. So I think that was an important issue that was brought up through Mr. Howard's research that we didn't know, frankly, the first time around here.
And is it safe to say that if we do come to an approval today, it would be conditioned upon...
Well, I would say two things. Yes, it's going to be, it's going to be conditioned on that, and I think what we'll probably do is say that the resolution has to be recorded at the county clerk's office so that in a title search. Resolutions don't come up in title searches unless they're recorded. And, you know, we only really require their recordation when we think there's an important issue that, you know, should be found in the chain of title. So I think their explicit statement here, which is frankly, in my view, gets them over the finish line. They wouldn't, they wouldn't be a permitted use without that. The resolution itself, which is going to say that it's conditioned, you know, they made that representation, and we are accepting that representation, and the recordation of the, of the resolution in the county clerk's office so that it's there for anybody to see in a title search, you can't take that back. They could not, after this meeting, say, you know what, we've decided not to abandon it. This is it. They've made that decision, and I would just, Mr. Collins, ask that you agree with that.
Yes, I agree, and I'm authorized by Mr. Cohen to make that agreement, who's the attorney representing the owner. I would just ask that the recording simply be reference to the previous resolution, and that has been abandoned, not our entire site plan.
No, what would be recorded, because otherwise it would be some sort of deed or something. We would just record the resolution itself.
Okay.
Down, you know, down in freehold.
All right.
And Ron, is there a time period where you can amend an abandonment?
No.
It's just, once it's in, it's in, it's over.
An abandonment has a very specific legal ramification to it. See, the, the assumption that the law makes is that, number one, the law doesn't like nonconforming uses. The law likes it when things are conforming. So the law, you know, almost assumes that over the course of time, you know, nonconforming uses are going to resolve themselves, and they're not going to be there for forever. So you're only allowed to have them so long as, you know, you can, you can repair them, but anything that totally destroys them, you lose it. If you abandon it, you lose it. The trick with abandonment is it's very subjective. So the fact that they have made a very clear statement, you know, achieves the abandonment. And it has one, one conclusion, which is that they no longer, to the extent it was something that was permitted on the site, it's no longer permitted.
And you said, recording it means that anybody doing a title search will get a full copy of the resolution?
Yes, yeah. So if they sell the property during due diligence, if there is due diligence in the sale, if someone goes down to... sale, if someone goes down to the county clerk's office and the orders, does the title work, they'll see it. There's also case law out there that if you don't record something, there are these limited circumstances where future purchasers have been almost relieved judicially of having to follow conditions because they couldn't find out about them during the due diligence process.
That was in the New Jersey Planner not too long ago.
It was the Aldrich v. Schwartz case, I think. I think, I believe that's the name of the case.
So, it looks like, what do we have for resolutions, for stuff for the resolutions? We've got utilities located on the backside of the pole, ten foot, ten to twenty foot candles on the lighting. We're going to allow a company placard up to the maximum of the square footage allowed by the ordinance. Bollards, and recording of the abandonment of the residence. Is there anything else?
And that color's going to be battleship gray.
That doesn't have to be a resolution, that's just what they're, they're doing it.
Well, that's their representation.
Okay.
So, if, if.
Did you say bollards? I'm sorry.
Yeah, we said, we said the bollards, subject to Laura's review and approval.
And did we need to put in a resolution about this ice catching?
Yeah. Well, that's part of their plan. So, they're bound by what is, and that, that shows in their plan, right? Yeah, so there's a condition that's always in there that says they're bound by the plan that they show us unless we've amended it. Also, they need to resolve the DOT permitting issue with the DOT.
We'll, we'll provide proof of the permit.
Yeah.
I would like to thank Mr. Howard for bringing to our attention something that he felt we needed to. Any other questions? Okay, take a motion?
I know that you closed the public.
Oh, wait, sorry. Close the public portion of the meeting. Do we have a, have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case number SP 960R, United Advertising Corporation, with the stipulations discussed.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Coach, oh, Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Russo?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for your time. We look happy to, working with your professionals to perfect the approval. Thank you.
Have a good day. Okay. Eileen, well, we don't, actually, Mr. Russo, do we have a master plan status report?
Well, we met last month. As you know, we had a pretty good meeting. It's the subcommittee's intention to proceed with the circulation element of the master plan. We're just going to, actually, we have to meet, we have to wait to meet with the town council to make sure it fits with the budgetary restraints, but I think it will. So, we're going to meet next week, next Thursday night, the 26th. If you, anybody watching out there has something they do want Thursday night, we're welcome to come out. That's all.
Okay. So, we'll give a quick green team update. I know that we are pushing, I'm no longer the chairman, I'm only the vice chair, but the report on the green team is we're pushing to try to get our June application in, and we, at this point, need a lot of help from the town in order to gather a lot of information that needs to be uploaded. So, the sooner the town can get us the information, the better. So, if anybody's talking to, the town manager has, has engaged and has started to send out the emails asking for various departments to provide the information we need, so that's good progress. But if anybody here, Eileen, Chief Kudrick, if you're, happen to be in the halls, and if you can encourage the members that work for us to help out with those efforts, it's really a big deal to get recertified so we can continue to provide a benefit to the town on the various grants and so forth that are available through that program. Do we have a, any reason to go into executive session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
But before you adjourn, just a reminder, our next meeting is not May 3rd, it's May 10th, because May 3rd is the National Day of Prayer. So, we actually have back-to-back meetings in May, May 10th and May 17th.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned.